Good evening and welcome to the April 11th meeting of the Auburn Board of Selectmen. This meeting of the Auburn Board of Selectmen is operating under a hybrid format under Chapter 22, Acts of 2022. Public can join the meeting remotely by telephone at 1-408-650-3123, access code 235235861, or the public can join via computer at global.gotomeeting.com/going/235235861. All supporting materials that have been provided to members of this body are available on the town's website. Public is encouraged to follow along using the posted agenda. As a preliminary matter, this is Kristin Low Liberty, Chair of the Select Board. All members that are participating are here in person, and as are town employees, skip that part. As I said, this meeting is being recorded and recorded over the computer. Is there anyone in the audience also recording? Seeing none, can you stand and salute flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic which is one nation, one God, indivisible, and just as it is.
Got to try to read through that quickly to make up all the lost time from struggling with this. All right, we have no public comments under public hearings and presentations. We have, oh, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
We do have something under public comments from Darlene Coyle. If you want to come up.
Good evening. I'm pleased to announce that we have filled our position for the Economic Development Coordinator, Energy Manager. Ms. Brooke Haltgren joined us just about two weeks ago, and she has hit the ground running. She is very excited to be here, comes with a lot of municipal experience, so I'd like to introduce Brooke Haltgren.
Hello, it's nice to meet you all. As she said, I'm Brooke Haltgren.
Welcome, and thank you for coming in to say hi. It's good to see you in person.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay. Under public hearings and presentations, we have a public hearing on motor vehicle Class II license. This is continuation from the last meeting. This is for 141, 143 Washington Street. Is the applicant on the call?
I know I'm here.
Oh, even better. Is there a motion to open the hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Do you want to join us up at the podium or at the table? Whatever your preference is.
This works.
Hi, and if you could just say your name, address for the record, and then tell us a little bit about the license that you're applying for.
Yeah, Chuck Shurn's representing High Octane Classics, 141, 143 Washington Street. I'm sorry, what was the second question?
Just to tell us a little bit about.
What we're doing is, so currently, High Octane Classics, Lundgren Honda sells the cars. Lundgren Honda has the license that High Octane uses. We have a license over there that's under Lundgren Motor Cars. We're looking to get rid of that and apply for one for High Octane by themselves.
Are there any questions or comments from board members? Seeing none, is there any comments from anyone in the public? Seeing none, is there a motion to close the hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Almost said by a roll call vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
It's unanimous. Is there a motion on the license?
I'm going to make a motion that we approve the license, provided that all applicable conditions and requirements of the town boards and commissions, as well as state, are attached to the license and with the conditions of DCG to be as well.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
None opposed, so it's unanimous. Congratulations.
Thank you all very much.
Sorry that I had the delay from last week.
No, no problem.
All right. Under communications, we have none. And Select Board General Items, which I think some people might be here for, we have the Town Manager Annual Evaluation. Some members in your packets, you have the cumulative scores from the Town Manager's evaluation. And very happy to say that this is the first year that I've been on the board that our Town Manager has received a perfect score from the entire board. So congratulations on that.
Thank you.
With that, I don't know, individual members, would you like to start? Make any comment?
I'll make a comment. I just, you know, as I do every year, I just want to compliment the Town Manager for, number one, the work that she does and the staff that she leads. It's always been pretty easy, I think, to be a selectman here in town. Very responsible, very responsive to any questions that we have. Anytime I get any inquiries from constituents, I know who to call, and if the Town Manager doesn't answer me directly, then the proper manager from the departments gets back to me. So, you know, again, I think it's a pretty well-run machine here, and I hope that it continues to go that way for many years to come. But it's been an enjoyable time being on the Select Board here, and kudos to you, Mr. Jacobson, for making it that way. Great job.
Thank you.
Members have any other comments right now? Seeing none, I'll just, it's not going to be really adding anything that I haven't already told you in person. I just want to say that, you know, I'm very happy to see that you've got a perfect score. I think it really reflects how well you keep the entire board informed of everything going on in town. You know, we almost never ask a question without getting an answer right away that's already been thought out, so it's clearly already come to your mind. And if, for whatever reason, you don't have a response in that moment, it's incredibly prompt, leaving you back almost immediately with a well-thought-out answer that really informs us on whatever the issue is. And like Mr. Haltgren said, if we have an issue with a resident, you're on top of it, and I really appreciate that. So I think it's a well-deserved score, and not just, you know, from you, but for your entire team. I think it reflects well on everyone in the departments that you manage, and I do thank you for everything that you do.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank, I just want to thank the Board of Selectmen for all of your support and guidance over the year. First of all, also thank you for the revised, new evaluation form. I think we all appreciated that it was a lot easier to get through, hopefully for all of you, as it was for me as well. And I think it still gives us the opportunity to put out, at least for the public, all the accomplishments of Town Administration and what I've done during the year that you've guided me on doing, and still give you the opportunity to score me without having to go through volumes and volumes of paperwork. So I thank the Subcommittee for doing that, putting it together on the whole board, for voting on that format. It was a lot, lot more pleasant this year to get through that process. So as always, this is just a really humbling experience always to sit here and be evaluated, but it comes with the, with the territory, and that's, that's to be expected. So I really appreciate it, and I think most importantly, I just appreciate the feedback that I get from you one-on-one throughout the year too, you know, not hesitating to pick up the phone, sending a text, sending a email. So I really appreciate that, and hopefully can continue to answer your questions in a timely manner, get you the information you need, so that you can provide informed responses back to the constituents that reach out to all of you as elected officials as well. And I also, I want to just make sure that I thank all of the department heads and the tremendous management team, you know, right from the department heads to the division heads, some of whom are here this evening. It's incredible. And of course, Ed Kaczynowicz, who I could not do any of this without. So we are a team, and I think we do a great job together, and we, I think it's because of the two of us and the way we work together that we're able to work so well with all the department and division heads. They're just, it's just a phenomenal team. I couldn't be any luckier, more proud. And again, once again, we went through an entire year of COVID. You know, we sat here a year ago and said, oh my gosh, we just got through a year of COVID, and we are already into year two. And now we're just rounding out the end of year two and heading somewhat into year three better, but still not over. So I am really proud of the accomplishments that the entire Town Administration's been able to make throughout the year, because we did it all facing COVID challenges, which is just incredibly exhausting, as well as challenging, just to figure out how to keep providing services to the public while maintaining safety of your employees and safety of the public who come in contact with your employees. And it certainly has been difficult, but once again, we got through the year. So I know, I don't have the opportunity to name them by name, but if it's okay, because I would, I would name every employee by name. This is, I think every accomplishment that this Town Administration's made throughout the entire year really is due to the teamwork that we all have, from the department heads down to every employee in each department. But I just want to make sure again, I want to thank Ed Kaczynowicz, who's our Assistant Town Engineer and CFO. It's incredible what he does. I think a lot of what he does, people don't even see, because he does it so well, and he does it quietly, but he just does a phenomenal job. We have a new town accountant in the past six months, Tom Zedewski, so I want to thank him too, because he's fortunately been able to step in and help Ed out a lot too. Fire Chief Steve Coleman, Joanna Paquin, who's our DPW Director and Town Engineer. I have to thank Bill Coyle, our former DPW Director, because he was here for half of the year too that we're talking about. Between them, they make a great team, and that's why Joanna's doing a great job as our new DPW Director since June, I believe. Darlene Coyle, our Director of Development and Special Services, now retired Police Chief Andrew Sloughis, and soon to be, I'm sure, a provisional lieutenant, excuse me, provisional chief right now, is just doing a great job, Todd Lemon. But again, I know we're talking about 2021. Mike Moreno, our Director of Information Technology, and Eric Otten, our Emergency Management Director, who once again had another year where we had to call on Eric more than we've ever had to in the past because of COVID. And then also just want to thank the Assistant Department Heads and Division Heads, some of whom are here tonight. Again, Deputy Fire Chief Glenn Johnson, Todd Lemon, Nick Schwartz, Jean Bulett, Jean Collins, Amy Contoys, Eileen Alexander, Deb Dubois, Ken Fairbanks, Chris Hugo, Adam Menard, Kayla Moody, Mary Ann Murphy, Kristen Pappas, Kate Spina, Seth Willard, Lisa Targansky, and Town clerk Deb Green. So I just want to make sure I thank all of them, because we couldn't do it without you. And the ladies in my office, who you all work with too, who support not just me, but the Board of Selectmen, Sharon Kwiatowski, Sue Struzina, and Rachel Prusse. So I think, I think it's also important to just acknowledge and thank him, plustumously, Lincoln Barber, our now-deceased Veterans Agent, who just did a tremendous job last year in a, in a difficult year for our veterans, as well as it was for some of our senior citizens as well. So thank you all. And again, one more year together, we just navigated another crazy ship in the waters of COVID, and we all got through it. So just want to thank you all. And again, just thanking the, and the community. I shouldn't, I shouldn't forget all our Board and Commission members and volunteers, because all of this can't be done with just us. You know, we need the residents, we need people on our boards and commissions, which is another reminder, we have posted some more boards and commissions that are up there now, so please take a look if you're interested in serving the community. So that's it. I want to thank you, the Board of Selectmen. My supervisors for giving me the right direction and guidance for some pretty difficult issues, but hopefully we've been a pretty smooth sailing throughout the year.
Is there anyone in the audience that wants to do something? I don't know if that's, I thought that might be.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Doreen Goodrich. Mr. Chairman and members of the board, congratulations and thank you for acknowledging the Town Manager tonight. As you know, the hiring of and the oversight of the Town Manager is probably the single most important responsibility that you hold, because without a strong Town Manager, nothing falls into place. I congratulate you on her perfect score, something that took a few years to achieve, but I'm happy to be here tonight to celebrate that score. Mrs. Jacobson talked about being lucky to have such a leadership team. I assure you, luck has nothing to do with it. Mrs. Jacobson sees leadership qualities in people, and she runs with it. She encourages people to be their, the best self they can be, to be the best department head they can be. She's supportive, she's encouraging, and she has built a leadership team, and it's her. Tonight is her night. I know each and every year, she acknowledges her leadership team as they should be, Mr. Kaczynowicz, as he should be. But tonight is her night, and I sincerely congratulate you, and I would not have missed this perfect score for anything. Congratulations, and congratulations to the board on recognizing that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
If there's nothing else from any other board members?
Actually, I should, and I should have acknowledged, so Mrs. Goodrich left the board last May. It just seems, sometimes it seems longer, but it's only been since May, because a lot's happened since May. So I just want to acknowledge, I should have said that as well, not just thanking all of you who are sitting here tonight, because you've been here for most of the year, but also for the first half of the year. Being under the guidance of Doreen Goodrich as the Chair of the Board was just a great experience, and I know you all worked with her and feel the same way. So again, once again, I think I'm lucky to work for a board like this, both current and past. So thank you.
So moving on, we have an open air license for Friends of the Auburn Public Library. That's for April 30th, June 4th, July 8th, and August 20th. If you want to join us up here.
Good evening. I'm Linda Data. I'm President of the Friends of the Auburn Public Library. We're having our first sale after a long time when we didn't have it, but it's on the grounds of the library, and I petitioned for those four dates.
Board members have any questions or comments? Seeing none, is there a motion?
Do you have just one, Mr. Chairman? I did look at the diagram. Is it possible to get a layout of where you're going to set up your tables and the circulation?
Sure.
I don't necessarily want to hold this up tonight, but if you could provide it for the office?
Yes.
That would be great.
Anything else from any other members? Seeing none, is there a motion to approve the license?
There's a motion to approve the license with the request that they submit a circulation plan and where they're going to keep the tables, and, you know, if any concerns are raised by the building inspector, that they obviously address those at the administrative level.
I'll second that.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you.
In good luck to make a motion that we waive the open air fee as well.
I'll second that.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. All right. On the agenda, item 5C, we have a vote on the 2022 Annual Secondhand Junk Licenses and Renewals. Members will have them, applicable stores in your packets. I actually realized this when meeting with the Assistant Town Manager. I own stock in one of the companies, so I'll be abstaining from the vote. With that, are there any questions or comments?
I'll make a motion that we approve them, subject to the DCG letter and our usual oil plate of motion.
Motion's been made, is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
And the Chair votes present. 3, 2, 1, present. We have a discussion and potential vote on wage theft and tax fraud strategy. So we received a report from Town Administration at our last meeting on wage theft, and it started the discussion on which direction we wanted to go in. Some members had leaned more towards a policy, others more towards a bylaw. So we're just going to continue that discussion, potential vote on if anyone wants to make a motion tonight. I think part of the reason we didn't want to discuss it last time or take any vote, we didn't have a full board. So I prefer holding off on any formal action. I don't think there's any rush on this. We're not going to put it on the town meeting warrant. This is coming May. But yeah, I think we can continue that. Is there anything that Town Administration wants to add?
No, I think well said. Thanks. If you need any other information while you're in the process of deciding what to do, just let me know.
I did include in the packet a draft bylaw that would have to be edited by us, as well as TAD Administration, to really get to what we're trying to do. So right now, it's just a very, very rough draft. For me, I don't know, other members want to add anything right now?
The only thing I would suggest is that we keep this very basic. I am not in favor of a bylaw. This is a state function. We already have enough responsibilities that the state asks us to take on. You know, a general statement in any contract should be sufficient to state our position on anything. And we should, you know, keep it very basic, but also make sure that it's clear, and it's probably already in there, that they are in compliance with all federal, state, and local laws and labor practices. So that's, for me, I think, let's just keep it simple and, you know, well, let the state do what the state is doing. And it is the Attorney General's Office's responsibility. Let's let them do their work. If we get a complaint, we can certainly forward that and ask the Attorney General or her office to investigate it. You know, I don't want us, as a town, to take on any more responsibility for something that is a state function.
Any other comments? So seeing that, I just want to add that I appreciate keeping it simple, and I would agree, but I think keeping it simple in the form of a bylaw would be the best route for the town to go in. It's just, it has more teeth. It's something that we can, we can point to, to say that it's on the books. This is how we expect businesses that we contract to build public buildings or accept tips to behave. So I'm still leaning towards a bylaw, even if it's a more simplified version of what we have now. Is there anyone on the call that wants to add? Seeing none, anything else from Town Administration?
I'll say it. Thank you.
All right. If there's nothing else, then we can move on to 5E. And that's a vote to designate one member to serve on the Flag Design Committee. We have Kenny here, who's serving for the Historical Society slot, and I was just informed by the Town Administration today that Steve Concilio has applied as well. And I think, did you say he applied for the background in graphic design?
Well, he, he applied, right, to be on the committee, and he attached just a note with his background, and his background is in graphic design. It seemed like a perfect fit. And just to elaborate if I can, the deadline for submission of applications was Friday. So we did receive just the one. We did advertise it pretty heavily, and we put it out on our website, on social media, on ACTV, and it also got distributed through the school's distribution list, which goes to about 4,000 people. And generally, we do get some type of feedback from that one, maybe because there's been quite a few committees of late. So it kind of is cyclical. Sometimes we get a lot of applications, and sometimes we just get a lull. But we did get one, and Steve Concilio, it was a very good application.
So my take would be to amend our vote previously down to a three-person committee. I think the biggest parts of establishing that committee were to have someone with historic knowledge of the town, which they have, someone with graphic or art design background, which we have, and then the board member could fill in, which the last need, which is just someone else with another perspective at the table. So since no one else had applied, I think that amending that would, would work. I don't know if we can take action on that tonight, since it's on the agenda as adding a board member to serve, not as amending the rules. So I guess we hold off from now and just discuss adding a board member to serve on that committee.
So being that it was your idea, I, you know, would suggest that, you know, you get first, if you would like to be on that committee. You know, it's, I think it was a great idea, and, you know, you're a creative person. So it's up to you if you want to go on. I'm happy to nominate you.
Thanks. I appreciate that. I'm absolutely happy to do it. I wouldn't have proposed it if I didn't, you know, if I wasn't willing to go on the committee. But I'd also don't want to have it assumed that I would be, you know, creating it with the intention of serving on it. So if anyone else is at all interested, I'd be happy to just upside and let someone else jump on that committee as well. So no one feel that that was my intention. Yeah.
I'd like to hear from, I'm obviously off, so I'd like to hear if either of the other board members would like to serve and...
Well, I voted against it, so I think that that would, that would, that would, give you an idea that I'm not a favorite committee.
Happy to let you serve as well.
Then I'll, I'll make a motion that we appoint Chairman Tristan Low Liberty to the Flag Design Committee.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Thank you. I appreciate that. Now we have a vote to designate one board member to serve on the committee to recognize individuals that have contributed to Auburn. We may not want to take action on this tonight. It's potential that, you know, we want someone else, but we want, if Scott wants to, if no one here is really interested in serving on it, so we can continue it. But we had also voted to establish that committee the same night, and we'll have one board member, one member of the public, and one member for the Library Board of Trustees. So I don't know if anyone has any interest in serving on that committee.
I'm not in favor of naming anything for anybody, so again, this would probably preclude me from serving on the committee.
I think you would make the committee's job much easier.
I would suggest that we wait till after the election to appoint a member, because the new member might have an interest in serving. So rather than take these opportunities for ourselves, perhaps it would be a good opportunity for a new member to jump right in and get to know some other committee members that they may not have an opportunity to meet with. So, you know, that would be my preference, that we hold off on making any decisions until we have, you know, the board that's going to be here for the year ahead.
I am perfectly fine with that.
Anything else? I'm okay with holding off as well. I don't necessarily see a rush. This is not to name any particular building or even the room. I think we just were, in the rules that we set for this committee, just to look at other ways to honor those people. But I'm okay with holding off until the end. We did say, though, that it would tie into the Jury Square project, so I just want to give them that committee time to work with the designs, and I just want to ask Town Administration if there's any potential conflict, if they started that late, if...
That's a good question. I think that you can absolutely wait until, until June. This shouldn't be an issue. We're just in the early phases, just signed contracts for design work, so plenty of time.
Okay, fantastic. All right then. So we hold off on that. Is there a motion to table that, or two, I guess it would be?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It's unanimous. Next is a vote to adopt the amended zoning marijuana bylaw revisions. So before our meeting, two meetings ago, or maybe three now, we had voted to send the zoning bylaw revisions that we had made to the Zoning Bylaw Review Committee and to the Planning Board. The Planning Board will meet tomorrow. I attended the Zoning Bylaw Review Committee meeting on this, listened to a couple of their suggestions. They corrected some of the language, fixed a typo, and a few of the other issues that they saw in it. They also suggested that I send it off to Acting Chief Lemon, who's taking a look at it now, for his comments of that... a look at it now, for his comments, that should come back to us as well. So this is just a revised version of that initial bylaw. It still has the same, really the same goal as before, just with a little bit of a cleaned-up language and some of their suggestions implemented. So I was looking for the board's support to send this revised version ahead to town meeting. And I don't know if there's anything you want to add as well?
Sure, so thank you. And Ed, please jump in as well, because Ed worked on this all last week as well. We convened a meeting this afternoon, the ed pool together of various town administration, people, the building commissioner, the police chief, the acting fire chief, the development inspection services director, Darlene, and the town planner, to look at the revised copy. Just, some of them hadn't seen it yet. It came in, you know, early last week. I hadn't seen it myself either, because I was on vacation. So we just wanted to take a look at it. And a couple of things that we just wanted to, to let the board know. So first of all, both the fire chief and the deputy fire chief, who's now the acting temporarily, and the police chief, neither one of them had any issues with the revisions to the bylaws. There, there, so there should be no impact on the operations. It wouldn't have any impact on what they do, no, no financial impact to them. They just want to make sure, as both of them said, as long as the, whatever RMD facility is following all the local, state, and any, should there be any federal requirements, that's all that they were concerned about. So they didn't see it as a public safety impact at all. The, a, a couple of things that we did note, so just, so the public understands too, because somebody brought up in the meeting, and it's a good point, when people see that we're talking about the RMD bylaw, just want to make sure people understand the RMD is a registered, registered medical dispensary, which is a medical facility, not a recreational marijuana facility. It's medical marijuana. So there is, as the police chief pointed out, it is the law. You are allowed to produce, sell, retail, all types of recreation, excuse me, all types of medical marijuana. For the recreational, right now, as we all know, that is also a law statewide, with opportunities for municipalities to either ban it or ban certain parts of it. But when we were talking about the RMD, we just wanted to be clear to the public that you were all talking about the registered marijuana dispensaries. So as such, a couple of things. The buffers that are proposed, that we noted that you put in there, the revised buffers to reduce the buffers, are still within the state law. They're, they equal what the state law has in it right now, so there's not an issue with that. There was one section that we noticed that might, there was a little bit of confusion as we were reviewing it today. The table of uses states that it is allowed by right, the RMDs, but actually, when you go down to section 9.3, 0.13, 0.1, if they have that, site plan approval is still required by the planning board. So technically, it's, it's not really allowed by right, but because it still has that section in there. So we just wanted to clarify that. I don't know if it goes in its current form to the Attorney General's office, if that may get picked up, but it's something that we thought might be a little bit of a discrepancy. And then one other piece, it looks like all of 9.6 is now being proposed to be deleted, which actually, that should, I believe that should remain in there, because that's the section that actually gives the planning board their authority to issue special permits for all types of projects. So I think, I don't know if that was maybe a typo or an inadvertent, I wasn't sure.
No. So after meeting with the zoning bylaw review committee and Adam Menard, he had said that, you know, the special permitting, since we were moving this special permitting under OS and changing it to now, and, and site plan approval would have still been required anyway, the special permitting authority under 9.6 would have been voided anyway, because there, there was no special permitting section under the table. So he had recommended removing that as well.
Okay, all right. So we'll go back and double check, because I think it was he and the building commissioner today said it probably should remain in there. But this does go to print tomorrow, so we'll have to make a decision tomorrow if that was something, was that your understanding?
Yeah, that was my understanding, that it should remain in there. But I think the board would have to give town administration some flexibility to either keep it in there or remove it. We need some direction, because I believe this is going to a public hearing tomorrow. So I think Adam and, and the planning board would need to know that for tomorrow night's meeting.
So I'll just say that the, so from my understanding of it, the site plan approval and zoning bylaws are not mine. Okay, so I, I'm, that may be where the confusion is coming from. And actually, I'll turn to, you might know best, site plan approval, I thought would be required even with the table as it is now with the guesses?
No.
No, okay.
That's by right. So all you need to do is change yeses to SP. I believe it's SP. I think you're right. I haven't looked at it in years, so SP could be special permit, but just, I mean, Adam can fill that in. Where, wherever there's a yes, it should be, it should show site plan approval, and that will cover that. That's not, that's not, should not be a barrier, because it isn't printed, and it hasn't gone to anybody. You know, I do have concerns about the local business and the very square district being included in this, because we are allowing housing there, and I know that we were talking open space, which, to be honest, I didn't look at too closely, but obviously, open space is only under the subdivision bylaw. But anywhere that we, you know, possibly have housing, I, I would not be in favor, especially in local business. I mean, those are typically narrower lots, they're small. I just don't think it's, it's necessarily a great location for it, plus it's right by the high school. And, you know, jury square too, I just don't think that this belongs in what the vision of jury square village district was intended for. You know, I am concerned about the offsets to residential as well. If you look at where CVS is right now, we had a neighbor who no longer lives there because CVS decided they wanted to put the lights on and turn his yard into, you know, that's less than 100 feet. 100 feet is only two house lots in an area district. That's not a huge distance. Now, the planning board and, and Adam would probably be better suited to answer that question than I am, because obviously, we have some lots that front highway business, but then they go into residential. So it's, it's, but in that case, if I'm not mistaken, those are considered, that lot is considered in the highway, wherever the frontage is. But you can get those answers, you know, very easily from them. But yeah, I would just change those to, like I say, I can't remember what, special permit probably is SP, but whatever it is for a site plan, just change them to that, and you're good, because that will follow in with the rest of everything. And, you know, I do think that it is good to have special permit for the planning board, but again, that's their bailiwick, not mine any longer, because it does give you a little more control, gives you a little more discretion. And where we have our commercial districts and how close they are to a lot of our residences, you really do want that kind of review, in my opinion. But again, I, I'll wait for the planning board to weigh in on whether they, you know, they're the ones that have to do the hard work of reviewing all this, so I'll leave it up to them. But for me personally, I would rather see special permit stay in for these uses, just because, again, how Oregon is laid out, it's, it's very difficult when you live right adjacent to a business. And it's tough for the business, because now they have to go through hoops, because you've got residences right there, and it's tough for the residences, because I'm in a residential zone, and I'm having to put up with all the noise and, you know, commotion of a business. And, you know, so that's why I would favor a special permit over a site plan, just because it gives them a little more leeway. And, but again, that's up to the planning board, what recommendations they would like to make, making a hold of hearing. But yeah, other than that, I think it's, you know, it's a lot of work that you went through, and, you know, I appreciate, I appreciate the work that goes into doing these things. So I will support putting it before the town meeting, absolutely, and it's up to them, whether they want to make the change or whether they don't. You know, I think it's a good idea to always take a look at this stuff.
This is roughly, I thought I saw you indicate that you...
Oh, no.
No, okay. Anything else from the board members?
I'm sorry, through the chair, I would, I would say, to follow up on Ed's suggestion, maybe have the board vote tonight to allow town administration to just go back tomorrow morning and just double check with the town planner as to what should be in the table of uses or any, we're talking a minor change. We just want to make sure we don't have a conflict in the table of uses with section 9.6. And we can just verify it with him, and I can let you know. But if the board just gives us that discretion, then we don't have to come back to you for more questions.
Yeah, and it would be hard to, I don't know if we would be able to.
Right. So if you voted tonight to accept this with any minor modifications as needed for legal reasons, we may, per Mr. Carpenter's comments, I want to make sure, I believe the SP is a special permit, but we want to make sure we don't put the wrong thing on the table.
Right, right. So I would just, I just wanted to add that, to me, the medical dispensaries are equivalent to a CVS, and so since a CVS could operate by right in a lot of these districts, I don't see a reason to treat them different, see the RMD different. So that's, that's, it's my thoughts on it. But that said, I'm also happy to support leaving it open for the, yeah, for town administration to work out and get a consistent...
Yeah, I'm not aware of any districts that give by right for most business uses. CVS is not allowed, any pharmacy is not allowed by u, by right in any use. There are always, actually, it's SPA, Site Plan Approval, is the designation. They do require review. So it is different. But, you know, again, the district, the village district was a very specific idea, and to me, this doesn't fit that idea, it doesn't fit the uses that were designed for that area to become what we hope it will become many years from now. And again, local business, I'm just, because that typically goes right by, you know, the, it's really, I think, highway business, or actually, local business is only on the street for a little ways. It's right by the high school. We don't allow alcohol to be sold. We've never allowed alcohol to be sold as a town right by there. And, you know, we did have a pharmacy right there, and they didn't sell alcohol, and they didn't sell anything like marijuana. So, you know, to me, it just doesn't fit with the concept of what that committee did. So, you know, I'm not in support of that. But I would make a motion that we send it forward and we give, you know, for scrupulous, as Mr. Baker would tell us, to adjust this to conform with the body, and we'll go on from there.
Does that motion give you...
Yes. Sharon's on the line too, so I'm sure she got that.
So a motion's been made, is there a second?
One second.
Motion's been made, seconded. Is there anything else on the motion before we take a vote? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I'm opposed. All right. Motion passes, three yeses and one opposed.
I'll let you know as soon as we just, we'll just clarify it. We just want to make sure we have it.
Nothing under gift acceptances, nothing under proclamations and recognitions. And under town manager items, vote to accept and expend $2,427.99. I'll turn that over to you.
Through the chair, thank you. This was a grant that was made available to any community in the Commonwealth to apply for, to receive funds to purchase, and we call it an AED, which is an automated external defib equipment. And it comes from EOPS, which is the Executive Office of Public Safety and Security, and we applied for it and received the grant. And we have the equipment on order, so we'll be able to have one additional AED. And the fire department will be looking to see where that should be best placed. We did have a number of them. There was a large fundraising effort a couple of years ago where we had additional ones. We had some donated to us, so we will take whatever ones we can get. So we're just looking for a vote to accept and expend the funds.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
No? We also have a vote to apply for and accept and expend funds for the 2022 State Department of Energy Resources Green Communities Grant.
Thank you. Through the chair, this is a grant that we've been applying for every year. I didn't have any information on here, because it's actually still being determined. The grant application is due in between your meetings of tonight and the next meeting. So I, this is what I can tell you, what we're seeking approval for is to be to apply for a grant up to the maximum amount that we're allowed to apply for, which is $100,000. I can also tell you that we are working with the state, National Grid, the school, Joe Feihi from the school department, our new economic development slash energy coordinator, and our, our ongoing consultant in all of these energy projects, Guardian, to come up with the projects. And the way the state evaluates them in a competitive, and these are really competitive grants, and the way they evaluate them is to look at the, the actual energy savings, not the cost savings to town, but the energy savings. So what we really are hoping to get is a replacement for the, for the heating unit in the Marion Building. As you probably recall, we converted town hall to gas a few years ago with a grant from the state, but the Marion Building, because it's such an antiquated system, and because of the way the piping was, there's fewer BTUs that are saved by the replacement of the system. So it may not make our application very competitive. So what we're looking at doing, and we have to wrap it up this week, what we're looking to add into that, some weatherization of the Marion Building, because that has a higher value on the dollars spent versus the BTUs saved. And then we also are looking at seeking additional funds for our electric vehicles, for the two electric vehicles. So as you recall, we received a grant for $25,000 to purchase two electric vehicles. The prices are continuing to skyrocket, as is the ability to actually get these. You know, there's going to be a huge back order, but the state has indicated that perhaps with the Green Community Grant, we could offset some of what would have been our match. So we cut down on what our match is, and it increases the competitiveness of this application. So with all that being said, it looks like we would be applying for the Marion Building in some context of weatherization, which I think is coming in around $30,000. We're waiting to see the heat, the, the boiler issue, the boiler itself, which is considerably more, probably in the 50 to 60 range, and whether it's some, the electric vehicles, which we would make up for the balance of whatever that is to the $100,000. And then our match, thankfully, could come from the $25,000 state grant for the EV in addition to our municipal aggregation funds, so we don't have to use any tax level funds for this. So whatever match we're required to put in, which may be around the $25,000 range, will convert out of municipal aggregation energy funds, which are set up to do this. So I would ask tonight that the board authorize us to apply for, accept and expend a Green Community Grant of up to $100,000 for eligible uses. And again, that's, that's hopefully going to be defined this week. We spent a lot of meetings with the state and us, we just didn't have it in time for your meeting tonight. And the application's due April 22nd.
Thank you.
Is there a motion? I'll make a motion, but I do have a question before we make a motion.
I'm sorry, if I've asked you?
Oh, that's okay. You're allowed a couple of these things. So there is a match required for this? Is it a percentage, like 10%, 20%? What is...
Through the chair, there is no match required, but when, this way that it was explained to us in DLR last week, when your numbers of the, of the savings, when the savings of the use of the electric doesn't reach a certain threshold, the state looks for the, to the town to fill in with some type of dollar amount. So that's why they're anticipating $25,000 match for us, may put us in the competitive category with what we're putting in for. If we only put in for the electric vehicles, 100% of it would be reimbursable, but we already have some money from the state, so you can't apply for a grant for the same thing. So it has to be for the difference. The weatherization, we would probably have to kick in a smaller amount, but the issue that we're having, it, it's been very expensive, as Ed can tell you, for the heating situation over at the Marion Building. So while... So while we look at the cost, because we want to make sure we're not spending too much money to replace things, the state isn't looking at the cost, they're looking at your energy use. So what we would be replacing it with does not generate the savings. So basically, we've, we've received Green Community Grants since the program started, but we've not had to put a match in, we've received over a million dollars from the state. But we started with the, we'll call it the low hanging fruit. So we started with the projects that had the biggest payback, actually the shortest payback period and the largest energy use savings. And as we were going down that list of what we had, the projects are getting, A, you know, probably a little bit more expensive, B, they're not saving as much energy because we already went for those projects that saved the energy. So therefore, C, they're going to start requiring a match. They said it was not specific to it, they wanted us to put together what the class were of all these things. And then they have to actually go in, or we have to go in to the state's system, put all of this in, put in all of our energy use and calculate what the energy savings are. And based on the energy savings, they're going to come back and make a recommendation as to what our match should be.
Is there a maximum percentage to the match? You said it could be up to $25,000.
There is no, there's no required, there's no requirement in the of the match. They're just telling us if we don't put in a match, we won't be, we probably won't be considered for any portion of the grant. Because it doesn't have the energy savings that they're seeking. So for every dollar that you put in, it reduces what they're spending. So they have a ratio for their grant dollars. They have to have a certain energy savings for every dollar that they give. So depending on what the calculations show as our energy savings, if it doesn't line up with what criteria the state has, we have to ask for less money for the project. And by asking for less money, that triggers the need to pay more. So there is no, there's no standard because it depends on every individual item that you apply for, for a grant. And there's, there's a massive spreadsheet in the state system. It's, it's massive. It's very difficult even for us to follow and you have to plug in all of your electric accounts. You have to put in what the savings will be, you have to put in all these formulas and then it pops up and shows the state what, there's a specific column that they need to look at. And that number changes depending on how much the project costs. So if the project costs $100,000 and it's only yielding this, if you put in $25,000, then to the state, it's only spending $75,000, which then brings down the cost and puts us in the eligibility category.
If we apply for, and would be intent to expend funds, and let's say it's $100,000 and they come back and say we got to match $100,000, do we have any means of backing out at that point?
Through the chair, it's a great question. They said that we would never have to do a one for one match, that there's enough savings in those projects. If we had to do that, we likely wouldn't apply for the grant. Because that wouldn't be a cost savings to us. So we're kind of focused on the cost savings.
Yeah, I think, I think when you boil it all down, they look at the investment and they look at the length of payback. And the shorter the payback, the more appetizing it is to fund that, that Green Communities Grant. Because the payback is longer for a project such as this, the match reduces that, or at least the state's share of money, that makes it more palatable. So that's where we got to walk the tightrope, quite honestly, to allow us to, to qualify by, by putting a match in.
And the good news is the match that we've identified wouldn't come from tax level dollars. It comes from the municipal aggregation fund, which is established to fund energy efficient projects. So that's what the dollars are there to do. It can, it will be paying our match for the electric vehicle grant that we received. We'd be paying the difference of it. And then this may cut down on that use. So if we, we want, if we had to use $25,000, we've identified the funds, it's in that account and we can do it. If they tell us they need 30, we could go, we could go 30. We have to wait and see what numbers come back this week based on that calculation that they have to do.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, I wish it was a, it, we've never dealt with a grant like this where it wasn't a specific percentage or dollar amount. Because it's, as Ed said, it's all tied into the payback period for the energy savings.
Well, I'll second the motion, it's on the table, if there's no other discussion.
Let me see, I have one more question. While we're doing this work in the Marion building, are we going to need to relocate anybody? Is it going to be done during office work hours or is this something that can be done after hours?
Through the chair, it can, we can probably stay there while the work's being done. The weatherization will involve, if we go for that, the weatherization would involve drilling small holes into the ceiling. They already, one small one in to get up and look. The other day, we were all in the office when they came. But it would get put in that way, maybe from the outside as well. The downstairs replacement will probably take less than a day. As long as it's done in the nice weather, we have no need to have heat. Unfortunately or fortunately, we all, our offices have electric heaters, which is really because we don't have an efficient system, we're not getting any heat in our offices. So even if we weren't without heat for a day, we all have electric heaters and we have electric baseboards, which we're trying to eliminate by putting in a better heating system. So we wouldn't be cold. But it's a good question.
Okay. Anything else for any other board members? Seeing none, the motion was seconded, there's me, well, I'm not sure if you, all right, great. All those in favor?
Aye.
It's unanimous.
Thank you very much, and we'll let you know what, what we finally decide on. We said the application will be due and put in, if the board in any case, if the board ever didn't like something that we were putting in for and if the state came back and said something, the board always has the opportunity to reject it too. You know, this isn't something that commits the board, but we, we wouldn't recommend it if it wasn't a cost effective grant.
Moving on, we have a discussion and vote to extend outdoor table service by local license holders. Turn it over to the town administrator to talk about this.
Thank you, so, and I want to, at the same time, answer a question that Mr. Carpenter had. Because I apologize, my emails didn't go through to him this afternoon, so I can use, it was on this item specifically. But as you probably recall, back in 2020, when COVID first hit, the state passed a law that allowed the licensing authority, which is the board of selection here, of local licenses to enable businesses to have outdoor dining if you wanted to have them do that through a certain period. That period came and then as it appeared COVID wasn't leaving, the state implemented another law, extended that date again. Both times this board voted to help the business community and approve of the ability to extend the outdoor dining. This is yet a third time that the state has extended it. So now it's being extended under the exact same language as the law previous to that the board voted on. So what, and this would extend the outdoor dining until 2023. The notification came to us last week from the ABCC. So basically, what the board had voted on previously is what we're asking you to continue to do, which is you're basically authorizing anyone to be able to have outdoor dining if conditional upon meeting with and getting the approval of the building commissioner and director of the public health. So Mr. Carpenter had asked me how many businesses took advantage of that in the last couple of years. So we had a total of six restaurant establishments that met with building commissioner and the department, excuse me, the public health director. And I believe one of those actually had an outdoor tent. The others did not actually have a tent. The tent requires just an additional permitting, you need to have a permit under the bylaws to get a tent. One of those businesses unfortunately has since closed. The other five are still in business. And the other question is, would they, those other five that are still open, if they want to continue to do this, is it just automatic, does the approval go over? And our answer is no. We would want them to come back and just show us again their plan. If nothing's changed on the plan, both Delian and Caleb, you know, very quickly will say, nothing's changed, we're good and you're good to go. If there's any major change, they would just have to review it and make sure. And Caleb pointed out to me, an example of a major change would be if somebody decided this year they're going to actually rent a tent and have 50 people outside. That may trigger the need to shut down some tables inside because you have to have your restrooms based on your occupancy. So they would either have to bring in another restroom, affordable restroom, or they could potentially close a couple of the seats inside, which if COVID were to strike again and they had to do that, it might not be an issue. But as long as they're doing what they've done in the past, it's very easy to get the permits. The one last thing I would say is, we don't anticipate many businesses are going to want to do this this summer for two reasons. We're back to pretty much pre-COVID in all our restaurants and establishments, so people can leave indoors. Those that may want to have outdoor seating, if they have an area that's maybe partially covered or they can put umbrellas, are probably interested in doing it. We do know one business was paying an exorbitant amount of money to rent a tent and the outdoor tables and chairs, you couldn't put your indoor things outside. So it was very, very expensive to have the outdoor dining. So I don't know that many will take advantage, but by voting it, the board's giving those businesses who decide to make that investment the opportunity to do it. So we would highly recommend it.
Well, that was just exactly what I was going to say, is that, you know, I think it's, it's up to the restaurant owner to figure out if it's a profitable thing, whether they can do it. But, you know, I certainly want to give our restaurants and our businesses here in town every opportunity they can to, to get back and recover from the losses of the last couple of years. So I have no reason for myself to stand in their way if they feel that, you know, they can get the staff and make some extra money and recover a little bit. So I'm going to go ahead and make the motion to extend the outdoor table service by holders of local licenses licensed for on-premise consumption conditional upon review by the building commissioner and director of public health in accordance with chapter 22 of the Acts of 2022 to April 1st, 2023, or such date as the law may be extended in the future.
I'll second for discussion.
Motion's made and seconded for discussion, Mr. Carpenter.
I just, and I don't think I asked this when we first did it, there's no fee associated with this, right? There, there's no review fee. So when they come in, they just put together a plan, the relevant people look at it and there's no additional money.
There is no additional fee unless it's determined that the size of the tent that they're putting up, then they would need a tent permit and it carries that.
Right, I mean, obviously if they need a building permit for certain things, you can't waive those things. I just want to make sure that we're not charging them anything extra for giving them this opportunity.
Okay.
You're good, thank you.
Anything else? I just have one question before we vote on it. So is there anything we can do to make this more of a permanent on our end from the town side? Seems that we were all pretty much in favor of giving businesses this option if they wanted to do anything outdoors that they could. Are there any bylaws that we should look to change or anything like that?
It would be the local bylaws that allow for certain, certain outdoor activities or certain parking restrictions. Sometimes the, I can't necessarily say it happened here, but I know a lot of communities that are in the Boston area, that have less land area. When they had outdoor dining, they either lost all of their parking or they lost the majority of their parking. So those type, those communities would have to really look at their ordinances and bylaws and reduce the parking requirements because oftentimes you can't do both. You can't have your outdoor dining and accommodate the parking on one person. Some communities actually were very creative because their businesses had no land, almost to do this. So they would open up public spaces and make it available for businesses to, to put out their tables and chairs. Fortunately for our businesses here, we haven't had a business that's complained about it. But to make it more permanent, we would have to make some changes to the bylaws in probably both the parking and the, there are several other areas, I couldn't tell you off the top of my head, but it definitely would need some bylaw revisions, zoning bylaw revisions.
Great, thank you. Maybe something the board wants to consider, if this is popular, I will see, I guess, if anyone takes advantage of it this time around, if that's actually going to be popular with business community.
It certainly seems to be a trend across the country since COVID. I mean, everyone always liked outdoor dining, but a lot of businesses never, never actually took it on until COVID when they were forced to do it because they had no other options. And now I think a lot of patrons think it's a great option. So I think we're going to see more and more communities making some changes like that to allow it to be permanent because it's become just a different type of dining out that's probably continuing popularity.
I think Outback does a pretty good job because they actually built it into their concept. You know, parking is going to be hard because they typically have, buy the smallest possible lots that they can because it's very expensive to buy land. But maybe looking at the side yards, especially if it's, you know, abutting another business, you know, maybe they can give you allowances to pave closer to the property line, you know, put pavers in, whatever, just so that they can use that space on a temporary basis. Because they're going to, they're not going to want to leave any of that stuff out for the winter anyways. But that would be something to look at, you know, looking at the setbacks, maybe give them a little land back. You know, those pavers are great, you can put them down and you can basically do almost anything. I don't know how expensive they are, but they are a good functional thing for people to use.
That's a good point. I think also the ABCC on the state level would have to make some changes. Right now, they're through this law, you're allowed to give these businesses the opportunity to do this without having to go, having to go through the ABCC for an outdoor license. So I think that's another piece of this, that even if you change one local bylaws to really simplify the whole process for businesses, the ABCC will probably have to make some changes.
Thank you. Is there anything else on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. We also have mentioned item 6D, which is the same thing, we're just talking about food. I don't know if there's anything you want to add that's separate.
No, it's the exact same thing, it's just we have two different license holders.
I would make a motion that we extend it to April 1st, 2023, or such date as the law may be extended into the future.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Under table items, we have the continued discussion, we'll report on wage thefts. We've already covered that on an earlier item, so it just happened new. Selective member items, so I have included some zoning bylaws that I wanted to bring to the board's attention. This is under 7.5 signs, which do not require a sign permit. And the reason that I wanted to bring this up is I noticed that there was a case, it was from the ACLU, where a similar restriction was struck down in the city of Holyoke. And given that, you know, the only sign restriction we have is that someone can't have political signs 30 days outside of an election. And that, that immediately sprung to my mind when I, I saw this case. And so I started to look in and see what other kind of restrictions we might have that might fall under that. It's private property, they're allowed to put up a sign and we can't restrict it. So I found a couple of sections that I thought might violate according to that ruling. And wanted to know what other board members thought about kind of removing them. As far as for the elections go, I think it might make sense to remove the 30 day limit since we have other candidates that are running for a district Y S D. In a local election, it makes sense, everyone's under the same restriction, you have 30 days. But if you have a candidate that's running for the county, their signs are going up in Milbury at a different time that those signs are going up in Auburn. And really, if an individual wants to put up a sign on their own, are they able to do that? Are they able to put up their own sign for something? If it's a handmade sign, so I just think there's a lot of gray area with this. And I, I don't know of anyone that's been fined for putting up a political sign early. But also when we get to primaries, I think there's confusion over it, if someone running in the primary, they put up a sign 30 days before the primary and do they have to take them down before the general? So all of that started to come to my mind when I, I read the, the decision by the Springfield District Court. So I wanted to bring this up to the board members and see what all of you thought about potentially sending this off to town meeting in, in the fall. I don't know if town administration has anything that they want to add to that.
So for me, that, I'll just speak, because it's the first, you know, this is the first one. I wanted to hear a little bit more about it tonight. I think as with any potential bylaw, my recommendation is to sit down with town administration, you know, the town planner, the building commissioner who enforces it and get their input on some of that. Send it, as we usually do, to the zoning bylaw review committee. And then it does have to follow the regular process because it's a zoning bylaw. So that's not a planning board, it has to go to town meeting. So we haven't had an opportunity to look at it yet, or certainly if the board. So we haven't had an opportunity to look at it yet, but certainly if the board chooses for us to do that, that would be my recommended procedure would be internal review first, come up with something. Or if the board wants to come up with something for us to review, like you have been doing, that's fine too. And then we can come back to you with our proposed recommendations. Maybe it might go a little bit easier that way because then we can come back to you and the board can see everything and we can talk about it here. And once it's finalized, it can go off to the planning board. It won't need any revisions.
That probably makes the most sense. But what do your board members think? Is this something worth pursuing in your minds or?
I mean, to me, you know, I think 30 days before an election is plenty, you know? Certainly, I don't think anybody's been fined for putting up signs early or, you know, leaving signs up. I'm sure we can probably find the signs degrading in somebody's yard or in a public space. I don't have a problem with it going forward, have the staff review it. You know, we might want to include the board of registrars and the town clerk. Just, you know, what's, the town clerk association might have some ideas on this as well. She might have gone to something. So let's, you know, build in on that. And even talk to the town committees, you know, the Republican and Democratic town committees. We could send it to them and ask them what their opinion is. See that they're, you know, usually the backbone of a lot of the national or state elections. That's usually the candidate's first stop in trying to get local support. So might be good to widen our net outside of, you know, the customary routes. But I would make a motion that we forward it to staff for review and the board of registrars, the town clerk, and to the, to the Democratic and Republican town committees for their comment and review.
Okay.
I would just say that I'm okay with that as long as it doesn't cost the town. You know, I mean, there's, I, I don't want to get involved then, I mean, unless there's some reason. Again, you know, people put up signs 30 days in advance. You know, if, if you put it 35 days in advance, uh, if, if we were hassling them or anything like that, you know, then I could see we might need to take a look at it. But I have no problem, uh, you know, sending it for review is, again, as long as it's, you know, it doesn't end up being a, you know, town council thing and, and spending money to, to review this. You know, if, if there's, you, you said in Holyoke, there was, what was the, was it a legal matter against?
Yeah, it became a legal matter. So it was a, it wasn't a campaign sign, but it was a political sign that was in someone's yard that was restricted for some reason. I forget the details of it. I have the link to the case there. And, uh, Holyoke had fined the person for having the sign outside of the parameters that they were allowed. They, the ACLU actually backed them in countersuing and to strike down the rule saying that it wasn't constitutional because they were allowed to put up whatever sign they wanted in their yard. Um, and the ACLU ended up winning the case and Holyoke had to strike out that section of their bylaw. Um, so it maybe, it reminded me of, of our own restrictions there.
Well, we're, we're not being, you know, you know, I, I think we're, it's a bylaw. But it's, seems to me that it's more of a guideline that we're using right now. So, um, you know, it's, it's there for, um, for, for guideline. And if it, if it becomes a problem, then, you know, obviously that we, we should, you know, can spend the time and the money, but I hate, I hate to have too many people spending too much time on it. So, um, I, I'll, um, approve or whatever the review. But like I say, my concern is that, you know, we get too many people wrapped up and, and taking the time and, uh, if it costs the town any money, I'd be against it.
Yeah, I would agree. I wouldn't want this to become a major priority. I think this is something really small. That came up, but I, I do think that we have to treat town laws, you know, really strictly. And I think like you said, this is more of a guideline. It's treated more of a guideline. And if that's the case, then I don't think it should be written out. But I will defer to town administration on.
Through the chair, I just wanted. Yeah, that's good. Well, the man hours could be significant. I mean, it's a zoning bylaw. So any kind, any type of zoning bylaw, I guess, and that would be my next question. Would the board be providing us a draft for us to review? And if not, I guess we need a little more guidelines on what we're drafting. Are we drafting a new bylaw, an amended bylaw, what sections of the bylaw? I just don't know what parts of it we need.
Sure. It's, uh, in the packet. So it's, um, it's section 70.5. So it's 7.5 to 7.8.
Thank you. Sorry. So I thought it was stuck on my eight, 7.8.
So of the, the not highlighted, these strikers.
So it would be reviewing what's already there. Okay. So in, in that case, I mean, we're not writing it. So, um, you know, it's still a significant just amount of time to bring it to all those groups, but certainly have to do it. Like you said, there's no time restriction on it. So we could get the process started.
And you might be responding to these other groups. So if you want some time to think about it, I'll withdraw my motion and just make a motion that we table it until after the election and then we, we can take it up then to our first meeting in June, whatever the date that is. So usually around the 10th.
So just, uh, through the chair, just so if, if we did that, Mr. Carpenter, so you'd be proposing that we table to June 21? Town administration to be able to come back at that point? Or are you just saying to table it especially on how you're doing?
Yeah, we'll, we'll think about it, you know, the chair will have more time to discuss it. You might have some informal conversations with people or other board members may have informal discussions with people and come back with a little understanding of what, what the task might entail.
I think that's a good idea. This wasn't something that I was looking for us to take immediate action on, so. June 13th. So I'll make a motion that we table us until our June 13th meeting. For further discussion at that time. Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Closed? It's unanimous. Last item, I'm sorry, everyone. Discussion on ranked choice voting in municipal elections. So this is also something I'm not asking for any kind of motion on or action on tonight. In fact, this one's even less so than the last one, just wanted to bring it to everyone's attention and give everyone something to think about. I think there are a lot of benefits to ranked choice voting. So I included a report that was drawn up in AMERCE about adopting it. This would be a really long process if Auburn were to move in that direction. So nothing would happen immediately. Still have to figure out if we'd need new voting machines, I bet that we would. But this is something I wanted to bring to everyone's attention, get everyone thinking about, get everyone's thoughts on, on if it's something worth pursuing in the future. I, I don't expect everyone to have read through that report, but maybe you want to take another week, two weeks, skim through it and decide if it's something that you think has some merit. We can talk about this again at a later meeting and, and go from there. Yeah, Mr. Carpenter?
I'll just say that, um, you know, my initial impression and what I know of ranked choice voting, definitely not in favor of it. You know, it, it's, it's my understanding that, uh, you know, if you have two candidates running and basically it comes down to where a race is tight enough and through ranked choice voting, uh, the person in second gets enough, you know, second place votes, then it either goes to a, a new election, is that, or a runoff election?
So the, how we would set it up would have to be specific to Auburn. It would have to be a home rule petition through the legislature to set it up. But the, the idea generally is, so if there are two candidates and only two candidates, then your first choice is going to win. It's just whoever, it's that 50% threshold is basically who becomes the winner. So if someone, if it's between two, someone's going to get the 50. If you have a, a three-way race, which is most likely, which is why I think this is really good for a town election, as opposed to a lot of our regular general elections where you have two candidates anyway. But in that situation where you have multiple candidates seeking potentially one seat or two seats, and you, say you have three people seeking the one seat. If one person finishes first, but they only have 40% of the vote, and the next person finishes second with 35 or something percent of the vote, but the person that came in third had a bunch of second choice votes supporting candidate B, then they would be eliminated and those votes would go to candidate B. Maine adopted this for a congressional race and that was the first time that I know of in US history where a congressperson who got the most first choice ended up losing the election because the second choice, or the person who got the second most number of first choice votes, uh, received second choice from all of the other candidates. It essentially encourages more people to run. And if there are candidates that are similar, it means that someone who favors one candidate or favors those two candidates may not feel compelled to vote for whoever they think has the best chance of winning. And they'd be able to cast their vote for the person that they think they agree with more, but maybe doesn't have as good of a chance of winning. Uh, and then give their second choice vote to the other person. So that way there, they kind of feel they have an insurance that if their first choice doesn't do well, they get creamed, their person will be eliminated, their second choice will go to the other person. So it, it gives a little bit of that. I think one reason that it would be really helpful in a municipal election, we have a lot of people running, a lot of different visions for a town up for election, you may have people with similar views. And you may have that exact situation where someone really relates to one person. They want to support that person, but they don't think that, that person's going to win. So they go for who would be their second choice. Uh, in, in our current election process, that person's initial support for that vision or that idea just isn't, isn't shown. So you would really have no idea how much support that person had, or their opinions, their views had. With something like ranked choice voting, now it might be a little bit more clear. You'd see, okay, that person got this many first choice votes and this person got that many second choice votes. So, um, it, it takes that away. Uh, it also, I think, helps with, uh, you know, candidates' negativity. This hasn't really been an issue, at least that I've noticed in a lot of our recent elections. But if you're competing and it's a crowded race and you're not just competing against everyone else, you're also competing for that second choice, then one of the, the arguments for ranked choice voting is it takes away a lot of the negativity. No one wants to go negative. No one wants to lose out on the second choice vote also. Because you could, someone can essentially go multiple times in that sense. So they, it also came up, got really popular after the crowded Democratic primary to replace Joe Kennedy. Because there were a lot of Democrats running in that race. And of course it went to whoever had the most number of votes. I forget the number of candidates that were running in it, but the person that won did not have the majority support by far. And there were a lot of theories and speculations that if it had been between him and one of the other candidates, one of the other candidates probably would have beaten him, but the votes were so dispersed amongst all of them that, that it didn't work. And in a ranked choice voting system, you wouldn't have to worry about that. So, um, that, those are the reasons I kind of need to sort of.
I'll just say that I respect what your thoughts are, but I'm totally against it.
Fair enough.
I have to say, actually, I kind of like the idea. I don't like the idea of having to get new validating machines.
Yep.
But I do like the idea of ranked choice voting.
Someone could be tabling this for another two weeks or so if that's.
Well, I entertain a motion to table this for our.
Meeting?
Yeah, next meeting.
So moved.
Second. Before we take a vote, is there anything town administration?
There's no.
Just the main and second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Closed? It's unanimous. What's that we have? Is there anything else from any other board members? Seeing none. Oh, I have the lead.
Unanimous from January 18th. Are there any corrections or omissions?
Now that's something that's red. Motion to adjourn. All those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous.